This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everybody, to Wednesday, February 16th, 2022 meeting of the Monterey Select Board here in Town Hall, beautiful downtown Monterey. I am Stephen Weiss, the Chair, sitting here with Justin Minkus, President. And Don Windgold is-
Present remotely.
Present remotely. Okay, great. So let's just jump in, shall we? Business number one, special municipal employee status for Conservation Commission members. So Melissa, did you do your-
No, it was Justin that was doing it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Justin.
But Chris submitted extra documentation.
Yeah, so basically, the law seemed to allow him to apply for building permits as a commissioner, but he wants to, he mentioned appearing before the Resilient Board of Appeals as well, and he had additional documentation, so I would motion to designate the Conservation Commission as special municipal employees pursuant to match general law chapter 268A, section 1, part N, is the definition of a special municipal employee. And that would essentially allow commissioners to do things that they might not participate in ways that they may not be able to participate otherwise. Like, for example, I benefit from the special municipal employee status, which allows me to work for the fire department as well as the select board, but I'm automatically a special municipal employee as a selectman in a town under 10,000. So I would motion to make the Conservation Commission designate them special municipal employees. I don't think that's a problem. I second that. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? No, if there is any discussion, then I would vote yes. Oh, yes. Don?
I'm voting no, because I don't think it's proper to include an entire commission. It has to be individually appointed as a special municipal employee. So my vote is no.
Okay. Item number two, response to January 31, John Silberk open meeting law complaint from last meeting. So we've, I believe that we've, or at least I've sent out my approved version of the executive session minutes. And I think that's what we're going to try to prove. We're going to actually try to approve the executive session minutes, but not send them, but not disseminate them to the public because they're, as they are part of an ongoing investigation. However, once the investigation is concluded, they will also be sent out to the public. So that's what's, that's what's happening. For some reason, we don't get to it, then I would move that we ask for an extension so that we do have the time to properly approve them. I would, I can write an email to John right now. I would just say, in response to your January 31 OMO complaint, the select board is going to approve executive session minutes, beginning by entering executive session tonight to, for the purpose of approving those minutes. Well, I would, I would wait to see if we actually do get to it, because it seems to be a number of things on the agenda. I agree, but I think we could just say that we're planning on doing that to show that we are responding to it. And I would, I would let it know that, because if you tell Don Silberk that you're going to do something and you don't do it, it won't have a problem, as they say. So, so I would, my, so I guess my only suggestion is this, Justin. You have it, you have the email all queued up, and if we end up going into executive session, it's ten. If we don't, we'll amend it at that point. Is that okay? So we can return to that agenda later, I guess. Fine. So let's go on. Council opinion on previous Conservation Commission's request to donate money to the Monterey Preservation Land Trust attached. Okay, so, um, the reason why this is on the agenda is that there seems to be a few things that are happening, and Melissa will correct me if I'm wrong. I know she will. But it's my understanding that way back when, approximately 10 years ago or nine years ago, a $25,000 fine was paid for the clearcutting of some property in violation of the rules. And that money was to be used by the Conservation Commission as the Conservation Commission saw fit. Okay, I'm still good, I'm still good.
Well, I saw fit, but as per the law that it was accepted.
As per the law. So fast forward to, to this year. I gather the, there may have been discussion, or I don't even know if there was discussion with the previous Conservation Commission about, about the $25,000, but nothing was done officially. And, and we requested, however, the use of the monies was flagged by our accounting team. Treasurer or accountant?
Accountant.
Accountant. So it was, because it was flagged, and that's our job, we sought, we sought advice of Town Council. Town Council sent out a letter to Melissa stating the facts about, about the money that were set aside. My concern is, so, so my concern is the following. At the same, a few days later, this board received a letter, John Silberk, stating that we are to do what the Conservation Commission wanted to do with the monies. And he demanded that we take care of it. And the problem with that, or the concern, is that he sent this letter. He signed it John Silberk Finance Committee, Monterey. I did ask the Chair if this is something that the Finance Committee is asking about. The Finance Committee Chair said no. And the monies that are to be used ultimately may be used by the Monterey Preservation Land Trust, of which John Silberk sits on the board. So the, I guess my concern is, is that you have a member of the Finance Committee who also sits on the Monterey Preservation Land Trust Board demanding the select board do something, do something, or have the Conservation Commission does it. So he doesn't sit on the Conservation Commission, but he does sit on two boards. And this is, when you're talking about monies, I'm concerned about the conflict of interest. I just want to make it very clear that anything that we do, first of all, that anything that's done, it's got to be done properly, but it cannot involve anybody who sits on two boards. And it cannot involve John Silberk, because he's on the land trust. So now, I just want to bring this up, because it's, in the ether over here, we were, the board has received lots of emails about improprieties and how people are not doing the right thing and law and order. This is, this is, this doesn't, this doesn't pass the smell test. And when it comes with money, then it really, then it really becomes a issue. So I'm not saying that I, or you, or the board is going to file papers about it, nor are we going to send an email to as many people as we possibly can. I think that, but I, but I do, but I do think that we need to be very careful, and we want to make sure the monies are used properly. But it cannot be, it cannot be a decision, and it cannot be a decision that John Silberk gets to weigh in on.
Well, I was at the meeting where this money was dispensed at the Conservation Commission level. The money's not going to be used by the Monterey Land Trust. The money's going to be used to cut trails into, that the public can use to hike on, on land that's owned by the Monterey Land Trust. So the Monterey Land Trust is not getting the money. All the money's going to a company to cut in the trails for hiking, for the general public to use to enjoy these public lands, so.
So, yeah, so what you're telling me, John, is the money's not being used for the land trust, but it's being used by the land trust.
No, it's being, well, it's being used to cut in trails into property that they own, right? That the general public can use.
So generally, if you're using money to, so that's going to benefit the land trust. So the money's being used for the benefit of the land trust, so.
No, the money's going to be paid to a company that cuts the trails in. The land trust receives none of the money. All the money's going to cut in the trails.
From what I got out of what Brian Riley wrote, it's very, it's not very clear to me how the funds can legally be expended, other than it should be on property that the town owns. I mean, he, he said in there that basically the Conservation Commission will need to work closely with the, with the lawyer, it sounds like, to see exactly how it could be spent. Because there's all these, all these highly legal things about restrictions against it. But I think it would be good to see the money spent towards, towards the public, towards public good, instead of just having it sitting in a bank account. So I don't know if that's something that a Conservation Commission is working on now, because they need, ultimately, the Conservation Commission needs to authorize the expenditure. And it's very, I mean, from what Brian wrote, it's very unclear to me what a proper use of it is. So Justin, so the point I'm making is, I think it's a great idea to use that money for, to cut in the trails, but that, but there should be absolutely no communication from John Silberk as to how, when, and why these monies are being used. We have a Conservation Commission, and now the accountant is aware of it, and the town attorney is aware of it. They should work together to make sure that these monies are done the proper way. Now, if that includes, if that, if that is, if the proper thing is to, yes, to do the trails, I think that's a great idea. It has nothing to do with the trails. It's the idea that, you know, you, you can't get, you can't get letters from, from, you know, somebody sitting on two commissions telling you what to do. You just can't. And if, and so I'm, I'm just concerned about it, and I agree with you, Justin, that we should, we should put it back in the hands of the Conservation Commission, and they should work with Town Council to make sure that everything is done appropriately, and nobody should be sending them emails about what they should do or how they should do it. We should put it back in their hands. Melissa, did they meet last night?
They did.
Did they, did any of this come up? Was this a first meeting?
This was a first meeting.
Okay. Do you, do you believe that they're putting it on their, on their agenda? Because it would be a good idea to get this thing rolling, because I also agree with Justin, that's been sitting around and doing nothing for a very long time. It should have been done years ago. The, I think the difficulty is, you know, Michael, from my understanding, Michael's just sort of done some research, and months ago, Brian Riley had issued an initial opinion on, on the funds and who could spend them, and he had said it's the Conservation Commission. But there's anti-Aid, there's procurement, there's grant agreement that, I don't know if anyone in this town fully, I mean, even Brian Riley's, you read his whole page-long email, and it's not exactly clear, other than it should be on property that the town owns. So I, I don't know that there's anything we can do right now with the funds. I mean, it's the Conservation Commission's funds. Right. Yeah, the issue comes from the Conservation Commission without any kind of outside influence. And, and I would, I'd be happy to hear what the recommendation is. I guess that's the point, that's the point of this, this whole thing. We do have, procurement laws are tricky. And so that's why you always have to want to have a procurement manager. So that's, so that's, yeah, that's basically it. Ask John?
Yes, I'd like to say that the deal was done. It was done properly. They voted on it as a commission. The deal was done. The reason that the land trust is involved is because they own the property. You have to have discussions with the head of the land trust. How are you going to just say, we're going to cut trails on property that you own and oversee, and not talk to John Silberk? The deal was done, and now, you know, this is the same Conservation Commission that sat on the money for, what, 15 years, 20 years? Did nothing with it. The deal was done. Now it's not, and the money was transferred from one fund into another fund just recently at the special town meeting. So, you know.
So actually, so actually, John, you're incorrect. The deal, the deal was not, because, because otherwise, we wouldn't be sitting here with a flag, tucking flag from the accountant and a lawyer's letter saying, hey, guys, the deal's not done. Essentially, that's, that's what the lawyer's letter says. So I know, I understand that you might have a better grasp of the law than Town Council. However, I have to rely on what Town Council, right, to us. And they're saying the deal is not done, and we have to be done-
That's not what they're saying. The deal was-
And by the way.
Yeah, okay, so the Town Council is correct, I get it. And the other thing is-
No, that's not what I said.
That's what you're saying. The email that you're talking about came from John Silberk to the select demanding that we, that we actually disperse the funds. And that's the email that I'm talking about. It's an email for- Well, actually, John didn't say that. He said, as the, as a $25,000 fine appears to be for the purchase of interest in land for the purposes of conservation and not merely upkeep of existing conserved land. So he's recognizing that, in my view, he's recognizing that the purpose that it was set aside for is not legal. But he's a sitting board member of the, of the organization that's going to benefit- Are there any motions on this topic? Or are there any motions on this topic? I mean, I don't know if I'm going to do anything else. I make a motion to put it back in the hands of the Conservation Commission and be extremely careful, and please avoid having discussions with John Silberk, who is currently sitting on two committees, and let the Conservation Commission make the recommendations. Sorry, John.
There's nothing for you to say. The accountant has said she doesn't want us, she won't release the money. It's a legal matter. All you do is send it back to the Conservation Commission with instructions to coordinate with council. Because until council approves it, the accountant is not going to pay it, and then you're done.
I agree. So Don made, so that's a very good motion, Don. Don made a motion in a sentence. So the- I, I just don't think we should make any motions. We shouldn't do anything official. What's been done has been done by lawyers and accountants and not us. We don't have anything to do. All right. No problem. Let's go on. Let's move on, shall we? Town and administrative items, update from council on appointment terms, if available.
Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, council on aging appointment, Maureen Banner. Wow, that would be really great. I would like to make a motion to appoint Maureen Banner to the council on aging.
Second.
Vote yes?
Yes.
I vote yes.
That's great.
Steve, at a minimum, don't you have to make the motion to send a lawyer's letter to the Conservation Commission?
No, lawyer's letter is a, I mean, it's a public document.
I'll make sure that they get it.
Are we going to keep conducting meetings with the public and just say whatever they want, whenever they want, and follow no procedure at all?
Yes.
Are we going to keep doing that? Because that experiment has turned into a disaster. I make a motion that we return back to the old ways, where public comments are not allowed during discussions, during select board business, and that they only be allowed at the end of the meetings, not during the meetings. Because they're taking over the meeting. The select board can get nothing done, because everyone can talk whenever they want. And that's my motion.
Actually, John, the only person that's holding up this meeting right now seems to be you. So I probably wouldn't second that motion. And by the way, this town has operated since 1847. We try to be as friendly and welcoming as possible. If people feel they want to have a discussion about it. Don and Mickey and Phil have always have brought an add to the meetings. They, I don't think they bog them down with, with anything that's superfluous. Superfluous? Sorry, Ken. Ken, I'm updating this mask. And that's the way, this is conducted in a small town.
No, it never has been, and you just allowed Don to make a motion for the select board. Come on, Steve. Did you second my motion?
No motions are being made. If you were listening, no motions are being made, and we're continuing on to something else. I do thank Don for his participation, but no motions are being made. Why would you want to make them feel bad?
I just made the motion.
Very sad. Oh, your motion. Okay, there's no second. Motion's ten. Can I continue? Library Board of Trustees appointment. I'm going to pronounce this wrong. I apologize. Hampton, Trelawney Cassidy, is that correct?
I think so.
Okay, so I, and I, I apologize. I messed it up. So I make a motion to appoint Hampton Trelawney Cassidy to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
In discussion? I vote yes.
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 I suggest you move to six, and say four and five for the end, since you have a bunch of people here.
I think it's a very good idea. Thank you. Okay, so, all right, let's move, let's move on to six. It's a very good idea. So number six, condition of schoolhouse attached. I could probably sum it up in one word, but we'll let the professionals talk about it. Do you want us to, so, Jeff, this is your, just a quick little backstory on how we got to where we are. The police department has some office space there that they use. The chief had asked me to go over with them and take a look at how we would go about removing the safes that are there, because he'd like to utilize them here for evidence lockup, or whatever purpose it is he wanted them for. So, at any rate, we went over, we took a look, and we were both pretty surprised at what we found. And animals have knocked down most of the ceilings on the second floor. The insulation's strewn about. There's scat is pretty much everywhere. There, there's, it looks like there's quite a sanctuary there. So at any rate, I had heard that there was a committee studying the reuse of the property. So I reached out through Melissa to see where that committee stood, if there was, you know, any progress, what the updates were and all that. And the reason is, my concern obviously, is the animals, you know, the deteriorating condition of the building. Frankly, the fear is abandoned. I use that very cautiously, because I'm sure that there's a great deal of sentiment to everybody, everybody in town, and I'm sensitive to that, you know? When I grew up in a little village and a little schoolhouse I went to school in still stands, and it's, it's pretty neat to drive by it, so I get all that. I just, as your public works person, I feel the need to move forward to at least try to secure the building, or, you know. Not a lot of sense to put a lot of money into it, if nothing's happened, it's going to happen with it, but something has to happen with it. Just simply looking for an update and where do we go from there? So do you think, I've sat on boards for many years when this schoolhouse was discussed, even starting the time when the schoolhouse was actually occupied. I know there are lots of ways in that, in that property, especially if you're an animal. Can you give us or get for us a general idea of what it would take to seal it? And also, I guess, how do we, you know, words, but how do we de-ractuate it? Right, right. We need to have sort of some concrete, you know, well, hey, what's, what's going to cost? What's going to take? I mean, I know at one point it was, or we made an intent to seal it a couple of years ago. But, yeah, it's an old building, and it's- So that kind of puts us, we sort of just went in a big circle there, came back to today, where two years later, it's, it's still vacant, and now it needs to be secured again. I would probably bring someone who, you know, a wildlife control specialist downboard, or an extermination-type company, to use that term as well. And just to, you know, eradicate what may be there now, and then move forward to secure it, to keep, you know, anything from the future. However, that is a very temporary solution, because they're going to find another way in. Right. Well, also, so, do most animals, like, break into houses and live there during the wintertime? Or is it, or is it the year-round thing, like, if we secure it, we wait it? I mean, I don't know. I'm not a wildlife specialist, so I- I mean, in other words, if the, if the, yeah, if the exterminator says, hey, listen, why don't you wait until things warm up a little bit, and then they'll, you know, not going to be as eager to get, to get inside, then I would, you know, personally, I don't want to do that. But if it's, if you're boarding it up in the middle of winter, and they're desperate to get inside, I would think that they're probably going to try to find a way in. But again, I mean, I've seen houses that are realder, I've seen a lot of them now, if you're in Bercher County.
No way of speaking. I have an audio, but no way of speaking.
Oh, I didn't know, Barbara, I didn't know that you were on. Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi. Go ahead. What you're saying is very valid. Get an estimate, get pest control in there. Do you want me to read what the district committee is doing?
Is it less than a page?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, why not?
Yes, well, I'll admit, when I was teaching at college, I tended to run on quite a bit, but I have written it out so that I won't do that. I would like to point out, the first engineering report for this building was in 2014, but the general public did not know that the exact same factors were operating then, in December of 2014, as are pointed out in February of 22, 2020. So we need to do something. Eight years is not a good score, if you will. What I want you to know is that the district committee is working on an application through the Massachusetts Historical Commission for the entire- for the entire downtown Monterey area to be a national park historic place. And this will give up to 50% matching funds for municipal buildings, up to 25% for businesses and residents can use the historic status with quite a few foundations to help them in their repair. That's why we're going after it. But I also thought you want to know why. I don't know what that sound is. Sorry.
Raccoon.
When you need pest control in town hall, too. Monterey is actually a mill town. But it's a mill town that is not built with housing for workers in the normal brick and mortar fashion for the 1850s and 40s. It is built in what is called Greek revival style. Delivered as the output or the encouragement from four Langdon brothers. They are John Merritt, Gordon, and Wilbur. And they inherited and purchased the Langdon privilege, so-called, all of the water in the mill on the Conca Pot. So they needed workers, and that was their way. And that's an extremely unusual center of town as a mill town. But we had to have a school, we had to have a new church. This is the same school. It was repaired in 1945 for the 1947 celebration of 100 years. We need to repair it for 175 years. It's repairable, but we need some funds to work with. The committee has no funds. So that's it.
Okay, so approximately, how long will that take for the Massachusetts to to acknowledge and award Monterey that?
It can take up to two years. But if we get going on the pest control, we probably should not be getting going on redoing the wallboard there in the schoolhouse, because if you don't get that insulation made of fiberglass out of there, the mice are gonna go, continue to go crazy. They need rock wall insulation, not fiberglass.
So would you agree that we should, that we should contact an exterminator to get an idea of how to rid?
Absolutely. Yes.
And also come up with an estimate of how, of what it would take to seal the building to see if we can get a year or two out of it, you know?
Yeah, yes. Well, we need some money to even do that.
Right, well, right. So the first thing to do is gonna get these estimates, and then we have an understanding of whether it's gonna be 500 or 5,000 or 30,000.
Yeah, yeah.
But at a very minimum, yeah. Yes, go on, go on.
It was only about 60,000 in 2014, but that was some time ago.
So what's the town's end goal in all this? I mean, the building's gonna sit another two years, we're gonna spend money to, I mean, what's the, so let's say it's all fixed up, then what? What's it gonna be used?
It's already been recommended as that when the, when the church was entered into the National Registry and, or at least the State Registry of Historic Buildings, at that time, the then people working, and I'm thinking Bonnie Parsons, because she signed off on it. She signed a recommendation that the entire district be put forward as an historic district. She now teaches in that field at UMass Amherst.
So let's just, let's concentrate on what we can do right now and what's about what we're gonna do in the future.
I will take care of that part.
So I would make a motion, if we can make a motion, to ask Mr. Hunt to bring back to the board a, an estimate of how it would be to exterminate the property and seal it.
Yeah.
Future infestation. That would be my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, and? So the other, on this subject, Barbara.
Yeah.
Mentioned the, thank you for your, thank you for your report, Barbara. You mentioned once the historic district comes, comes about, if it does, then we can get matching funds in a grant. But that's also possible if we designate, if we're able to get on the register of historic buildings, which might be a much quicker process.
Yes, it could be. I was, I was not assuming we could necessarily meet that bar, but if we could, that would be great.
Well, what I was gonna ask is if there's, if the board allows it, I will research what it would take to get that building listed under, listed on the register of historic buildings, because that could save us, depending on what route go, 50% of the money that the town would have.
Yes, yes.
So you're aware, everybody's aware, so it's, so the building is on the state register.
It's not.
It is. It's on Macris. It's on Macris. I have, I have a.
No, it's, I, it's not on the register of buildings where they give funds, because I.
Right, right. It's on Macris.
It's on the Macris list. Barbara, it's on the Macris list anymore?
It's on Macris, but means nothing. It's not on the register of historic buildings.
So there's a separate state register other than Macris?
There's only, there's four buildings in town that are on the register. It's Rockridge, the church, the Brewer House, and the Bidwell House. And that's the designation that gets you funds from the state. The Macris list is.
Okay, I did not know that. Okay.
So I would, as long as the board's okay with it, I would look into getting that building on the listing, because then that, there's emergency funds for things exactly like this. And that would save the town half the money.
Yeah.
I would move that we allow, Barbara, you okay with that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, frankly, why wouldn't I be?
I know, I want to be polite, I want to be polite and ask. So I would, I would, that we ask Justin to, to look into getting the schoolhouse on, on that particular state list.
Second.
Second? I vote yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, yes, or we vote yes, too?
Yes.
Yes, what do you think? Okay, good, we all, yeah, so the whole town is unanimous. Thank you, Barbara, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
For your input, and we're gonna, meanwhile, we're gonna, so we gotta find out how to. All right, yeah, yeah, that's going. While you're here, actually, Jim, can I, can I, can we jump to number eight? Because it concerns the highway department, and I know these guys want to get all these. They start coming, maybe not. Okay.
So. So over the weekend, I was asked by Mr. White to explain what we had, what we have planned for, by his email here. He said, frankly, your department should be checking the dirt roads on a more frequent or more consistent basis, basis, including weekends, leaving a major east-west artery on the weekends. Fairview Road unattended, and frankly, that pass was concerning. Fairview Road, in early days, was called Mud Road. Given the warm temperatures, the road has turned to mud, and there are trenches a foot deep. And he requests, we'd like to hear solutions to this problem on weekends.
So actually, you missed the first sentence, which says, I understand the highway department is off weekends. Is the highway department off weekends?
Highway department is not off on weekends.
The second thing is.
In fact, the day after that, that same road was flooded. And other clocks on the road.
John, do you live on Fairview Road?
No, Steve, I live on your road. Are you gonna keep asking stupid questions?
No, actually, are you gonna stop making stupid emails? Because the problem with it is, is, and what becomes bothersome, and it was a challenge for select board members, is that you don't get to try to craft a maintenance policy for the road that you live on. Believe me, if I had the ability to do the Bidwell Road, I would do it. So we, as a select board, are responsible for every single road. And I, in the future, it becomes a little disingenuous to say, well, I only want to hear about Fairview Road. What are you doing about Fairview Road? Tell me about Fairview Road. If I was concerned about roads in general, then I think it's okay to reach out to these folks that spend our time on our, on our dirt roads and say, you know, let me know what your policy is on dirt roads. But to have a discussion just about your road, I think that there's somebody out there that would love to go and cry to ethics, because they're saying, well, somebody's just talking about their road. That's not gonna be me. I don't, I don't wanna talk about that. It could be Dr. Silver, but the thing is this, we cannot just talk about the road that we live on. If you generally are interested in, in how, in how these guys are approaching dirt roads, then we can have that discussion. We cannot talk about the roads that we live on.
We can't. So we can't talk about the lakes we live on either, then?
Yeah, so, so that's an interesting thing. I'm glad that you brought that up, because lots of people live on one giant lake. Everybody shares it, the whole town shares it, just like we all share all the roads. That's why we talk about the lake in a general sense, and that's why we talk about roads in a general sense. But if I, if I wrote an email to Jim Hunt and said, hey, listen, Jim, I don't like the, I don't like the way the shore is right next to my property. Tell me about, tell me how you can fix it, that would not be correct of me to do that. Same thing with telling you to, you know, hey, I want to talk to you about Bidwell Road in specifics. When, when there were COVID problems, we had a general discussion about COVID problems and there was grading problems or grading problems. And also this, and who would start with this idea? I understand the highway department is off on weekends. I think that's insulting. These guys, these guys work when they need to work.
Seven days a week, correct?
We do.
Yeah.
We do. I'll show you a call log if you'd like. I can produce that for you.
So is everyone done talking? I wrote the letter as a citizen, not as a select board member. Steve, you're grandstanding, you know, if this is the way you want to conduct business, go ahead. Doesn't mean I have to be a part of it.
Well, it's not, it's not that. I just want to make sure, because we have, we have the entire highway crew here, John, so they're obviously, they're not here because they.
It's six, quarter to seven on a Wednesday night when they should be home.
They're not here because they got nothing to do. They're, they're concerned.
Well, what's the solution when the road turns to mud? Just leave it? It's a public safety issue. If a, if a fire truck or an ambulance can't get up Fairview Road to get it out of the part of town, so it's my fault criticizing the condition of the road. Are you gonna let me talk, or are you gonna talk over me? I'm gonna, I'm.
What, is that it?
This is what you allow, Justin. This is the kind of meetings that you have allowed to happen in Monterey. Are you sitting there silently?
So I, so, so listen, so Jim, what are your solutions to, to roads that have?
So we're proposing to implement a plan for winter road watch on weekends and holidays. I will continue to monitor the road on weeknights as I, as I have. I think it's, you know, fair as part of my, my salary position. And we drafted this, I believe you all have that in your packet, if you'd like, I can go through it word for word. But generally, it would be to have a, have the rest of the crew participate in the road watch. And that would specifically have one individual report for duty based on weather forecasts and extreme rises or falls in temperature, precipitation, whatever the forecast may be bringing. That would require them to come in on a Saturday at a given time. It may be later in the day, as, as things warm up and mud starts to develop. It may be earlier in the morning due to a snowfall forecast, let's say, or freezing rain. Same thing on Sunday or a holiday. Currently, I do that. I was in town on Saturday at about noon time. Things were getting soft, as, as they will. How we proceed with that is, is based on what we feel we can do to improve the road. There were several other spots. There were some spots on Beartown Road, Briswell Road, Swan Road. I can continue on with the list. I don't think that that's really necessary, but the proposal's in front of, in front of you all now, and how we would do that. We would rotate a five-week weekend schedule. And just going down the list, one guy would have it this weekend, next guy the next weekend, so you're not stuck with it every weekend.
And so the, and so the, the cost of the town, this where, during the budget season, so you're saying there's additional, there would be an additional cost?
There would be an additional cost of the town, and it would depend on, it would be obviously based on what their hourly rates are, because it would, it would be overtime incurred with that.
Isn't there already? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but isn't there currently already in the highway budget $100 a week on-call stipend?
No, no, it's $150 a month. I'm proposing to raise that to $250 a month to cover the additional mileage on their personal vehicles and the fuel that requires for them to travel back and forth from home to work. Then they would use a town-owned vehicle to actually travel the roads and do the road checks.
So we will share those numbers, that proposal and the numbers with the finance committee, because it's gonna be a change in the budget for, for highway. And what?
This would all come out of Snow Ice. Whether it's winter.
Right. Oh, but even, even after, even after the, the season's over?
No, because this is only from November 1st to May 1st.
So if you're only proposing it, not proposing it the year round.
Correct. And the rest of the year, I would continue to answer the phone, you know, during the off hours, as they come through from dispatch, let's say, for, and it's spelled out here as well, for animal carcass removal, trees down, flooding, things that require road closure. Sometimes the police department, the fire department requires a road closure, so we would be able to, you know, determine who's available and come in and deal with that, as we normally do now.
I think that's, I, I think that's reasonable. Yes, Mickey?
I just want to thank Jim, because I did leave a message on the town shed that I did Sunday morning, that Saturday night I rode up Swan Road and it, but look at the back tire on my car, you can see how much I got in the mud. But I got out and I got home, and I just left him a message, and he called me Monday morning. and said they were aware of it and they would fix it. And I saw the grader out yesterday. And today it could gravel out initially when you did that, and the road is beautiful tonight. So I wanna thank you very much for taking care of it.
Yeah, that's all anybody's asking for.
I gotta go out tomorrow night. Please, one of you remember that.
Sorry, Helen, you had something to say?
I'm gonna read again because a little over three months ago, as the select board contemplated hiring Jim Hunt to replace Sean Tryon as Director of Highway Operations, I said to Jim that he had big shoes to fill. He knew it and we knew it. Over the past few years, it seems like mud season comes four to five times per year rather than just once. And it makes driving and maintaining the roads a challenge. This is the price we pay for living in the beautiful serene rural Berkshires. For us, my wife and I, a price worth paying. Here we are, perhaps at the end of the snow season and hopefully at the beginning of the last of mud seasons. My wife Janet and I could not be more pleased with how well maintained the roads have been this winter. We want to thank Jim, Brandon, Tyler, Pete, and Cody for their diligence and commitment in keeping our roads open, passable, and safe.
I couldn't express that more better than Helen did. Just speaking to my own experience. You guys always come through for us, so I appreciate it. And it is not an easy job by any stretch of the imagination. So hopefully. I, whatever, I'm personally here for you whenever I can. If any of you guys have a problem, you know, let us know.
I appreciate the comments. Again, that's the, I'm still angry with you, Jim, but I can't please everybody. The fact remains, I was asked to propose a plan going forward. It's before you.
Yeah, thanks for coming up with the plan. I'd like to take some time to follow up with you, really, to discuss more about what this would entail. I mean, it makes sense. This is the first time that I'm sitting here, so I definitely like some time to think about it.
Sure.
To speak. It's my understanding, given that the road has been called Mud Road, that it's historically been a not great road to no fault of yours. And I know pavement has brought up a lot of controversy in the past when it's brought up. But I didn't know if there's an estimate of that.
I don't have an estimate. I'm sure there could be some old ones, but I know that the construction costs have risen exponentially on a monthly basis. So.
The other thing I was wondering is, I don't know what most people who live on the end of Bear Town Mountain Road, if they use Fairview Road to get there. Maybe not so much in the mud season. But maybe that would make a compelling, maybe a slightly more compelling mass work grant since it's a through road than the end of Bear Town. I don't know. Perhaps. That was just a thought when this issue came up. Because it seems to me that if we don't take any major, if we don't do a substantial product, project, that's not gonna solve the mud. As long as the road's more or less the same way that it is, it's gonna get muddy with no drainage work and no pavement. And we can only act reactively then and say, there's mud and we gotta wait for it to dry out or freeze out and then grade it and do whatever you need to do. But as long as we don't do a big project, it's gonna stay more or less, it's gonna get mud, right? If I'm not mistaken. And we have to live with that. Which is what we have by having dirt roads. So I didn't know, you know, maybe people don't even want pavement, but I just wanted to consider the options. If that's really the way that people would like to go that way, it's always, it looks less nice for a lot of people, but it's always consistent. Because.
That issue will take some time to resolve, so in the meantime, we need to make sure that things are taken care of.
Would it be prudent to look for, is there, are there, would there be a grant under the, for the engineering study to speed to determine whether or not it should be paved?
That, I know this, we would have to look into it some and see what, you know, there are a lot of programs out there. Justice Correctus has been the gun, I guess, even long before, you know, long before I came to town.
Right.
And I understand that it's given its slope. And the fact that part of it is already, I guess, part of it is already paved.
Correct.
But given its slope, it seems to be a challenge for you guys. And maybe past the cost benefit ratio. And these are discussions that have to be made forward. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that the areas that typically fall apart can be accessed from one direction or the other. There may be one driver that's an exception or two. But I don't want to cause a public panic and that the fire department was brought into this here a minute ago and, you know, emergency response and that sort of stuff. That's sort of unfair.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that a big truck, a heavy truck will not be able to get through the mud.
A large truck is not allowed on that road.
A fire truck can't.
Large fire actors would have to use the road to access any piece of property that's there. But from number sixty-seven to Bear Town Mountain Road can be accessed from Bear Town Mountain Road. Fire department is aware of that. I actually stay in touch with the fire chief, the deputy fire chief, the chief of police, and his sergeant. Just as I let you all know via email when the road was closed, and I believe it was the fifth. And they know when it's back open again, and the ultimate route of travel is spelled out for them. So it takes all I guess work out. So when they have an emergency, they know which way to enter from for a given address.
By the way, thanks for doing that.
I just wanna make sure that everybody's clear on that, that we still have the fire protection.
All right, Justin, you heard Jim say that the people live on Fairview. Most of them have accessed one way or the other. So you're usually not landlocked. People on Bear Town are landlocked. We only have one way out up to Fairview. We only have one way out. So if we use Fairview or not, we need to stay on Fairview. So I understand, I understand where you're going with this. But there's a little bit of inconsistency. The people on Fairview can get out and we cannot. If the road does not, if they don't do something serious with the road. And for some unknown reason, for me, and I don't think Jim has any hand on this either, I know Sean did, it's gotten really bad at Don's house.
Right.
It was always really good at Don's house to my house, and now it's really terrible. We don't know what's causing it, but something's gotta give. And then from Don's house up to three hundred could be a real disaster. So the access on the roads are totally different.
Yeah, understood. I think that makes sense. That for that reason, you know, redoing, prioritizing Bear Town is more compelling.
But I appreciate your raising the issue, but I just wanted to know that. We only have, you know.
I think my biggest point being that as long as we don't do anything, allocate a lot of funds and efforts, we have to live with some amount of mud. Because once it's muddy, we have to, don't we have to wait for it to dry out or cool down?
To some degree. It's much easier to work with when it's drying up. Today was fairly dry. We got out there right after temperatures rose above freezing. With that, and the morning sun, we were able to scrape up enough material to fill, at least fill holes. And, you know, it's a temporary, it's a temporary solution. The problem with this time of year is all the stockpiles have froze up. We can't get, we can't get stolen freedom. We've worked for three days to try to loosen the piles up in anticipation of what's coming tomorrow. So it's a, you know, it's a juggling act this time of year. It really is.
Well, Jim, I appreciate you dealing with this issue and giving us the proposal. I really do. Very professional. I appreciate it.
That's a nice word there. Thank you, John. So we'll consider this probably next week when you've had time to follow up and think about it.
Yeah, well, yeah, we wanna, we don't wanna, yeah. I mean, I personally have no, I personally have no problem voting on a motion today to at least make that adjustment on the budget for, and then have that, and then we'll have the discussion with the finance committee anyway, if you'd like to, if you'd like to make that motion.
No, I mean, like I said, I appreciate the plan. I just would like some time to go over and talk to Jim and get a real sense for what exactly it entails. And that's all.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. That's okay. So I'll make sure to put that on the agenda for next session. And again, it'll be a change, you know, but listen, Jim, you're the professor. You say we need to do it, keep people safe. Almost similar to Heather, sir. Okay, all right. Can we do, hey, can we do some, you wanna do some minutes? Yeah, you gotta go.
Thank you. Appreciate you moving that on. Thank you. Can't imagine all these guys sounding at two o'clock in the morning on the phone.
So here is a, it's about two eight. We're. Do you? I'm sorry, one second. Is this, are these line changes or?
I don't know. One of them, it came in two shades of blue this time instead of a purple and I don't know if it's because my ink's running out or.
There's not all that made.
Yeah. Yeah, so for, right, so I remember two, time was for figure. For figure, and we're already right, go acid and keeping the town's technology update is fine. Item number three, shall be determined for question to be answered prior to the request being considered. That's no problem. Stabilization, special behavior, DOR reference, a free cash, we told about.
So that was the one thing I questioned on.
Yeah.
Right. They recommend free cash to be three percent and stabilization to be three percent?
No, no, I thought we were talking about stabilization here.
No, I put both of the numbers in there. I can pull up the.
Oh, I was, thought we were only having the.
The email that I have that came from the auditor that said that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I was just surprised because I, out of no education, but just my intuition was that you would keep more in stabilization.
Right. Well, no, well, DOR recommends, so DOR recommends a lower amount than what we do keep in stabilization in Monterey. However, there's been a, and if you can go make an appointment, if you ever, back in town, Santa Cruz, tough to Santa Cruz. There's basically been a tradition in Monterey that we're trying to keep as much in stabilization as possible. And while I don't believe there should be a million dollars, the five hundred thousand dollar mark has been, the boards have, both the finance committee and the select board, have been trying to keep five hundred thousand dollars in there. That's about ten percent.
Injust stabilization.
In stabilization, not free cash. No, not free cash.
Not three percent.
No, free cash you don't want. No.
Well, I was surprised that the reason why I highlighted it was just three percent and the same amount in free cash and stabilization. They may well have said that, and they may well be right. I was just surprised.
Okay, so I thought that, so I was gonna take out, so then I would take out the, that free cash, the total about three percent, because that's not what I heard. I heard that it was.
It's right from the auditor that I put that.
Is that right? Really?
Yes.
So, okay, when I put on the end there, the reiterates commit to keeping at least five hundred thousand dollars in stabilization, which involves you to ten percent. I did not mention anything about free cash. And then, right, I did add that Monterey never used a formula for determining, determining what cola would be for the year. They just gave the same amount regardless of utilization. So that was, those were my alter changes.
Motion approved the two eight minutes as here.
I second that motion. I vote yes.
Yes.
I'll abstain.
Okay, the other one was two nine. Oh, no, good, this is blue and red. All right, so I think you are blue. Just reported a charter has stated, that's fine, management of our connect came in. Ryan had made, pushed a very close north of, it was one point three million dollars. Oh, okay, the delay has changed. I just added the word however in whole business. And Justin, then Justin agreed that wouldn't be right to not point to. Or I add or five, that's fine. Even transition can be, good, I'm glad you added that. New business, you want to see? The law actually discussed our future meeting, I can place on the agenda. Fine. Renewable energy working. Oop, yes, it's fine. Oh, I, it wasn't added that. You, so you brought up the fact that firefighters don't have an end date?
Well, and the way it reads in here, I thought it was only firefighters, but I've always known that it's more than just firefighters. Maybe I brought it up as specific.
Oh, no, I thought that's what got the conversation started. That's why I, and then I, he was informed that other employees at the highway don't have end dates. Justin was interested in getting a budget council on having employees without termination date. Board agreed to inquire of council.
So the way I wrote it was just Justin raised the issue of making appointments without end dates. Melissa will seek an opinion from town council as to whether this practice is legal, whether it's recommended, and how to perceive regarding appointments with no date.
That's fine. Okay, so you wanna, but, so that, okay, but we're gonna put that where, we're gonna put that above where the motion was seconded and approved. Right? Because that was done, the discussion happened before the vote.
I don't think that it did.
Didn't?
No. I mean, I think it may have started, but we voted and then continued to discuss it.
Okay.
Which is why the draft.
Let's look where, so I'm gonna take out, I'm gonna do mine, I'll take that mine. Let's look where, so I'm going to take out, uh, I'm going to do mine, copy of here, I'm going to take, I'm going to take out, I'll take that mine. For the conservation commission, into the record. Okay, I took up the word first. Okay, we, uh, I'm playing. Justin agreed to prove them. Oh, I put them and you put the minutes. I'll take, I'll get rid of my them. Well, I thought there was a way to get people in there, but. Don't push the content council from one of the parties involved. So the good session can be, could be. And you want to be giving us a ten.
Just so I can concentrate better for everybody.
Approved, okay. We wanted to say discussed or approved?
I don't think it matters. I mean, discussed is fine.
I, I like to discuss because it's more.
Justin, Steve, I gotta go.
Yeah, sorry.
Done. I live next door, you can say hello to me.
I did say hello when you came in. I know. Talking about when you're down on the road. Have a good night, everybody. But I was curious, Justin, what is that, the clerk, that email, I think she's working by appointment only. But the board member responded to recognize the email. I, I don't know what that word is, the clerk will be.
Reached.
Out to again, out to again, so, oh, because the RE and the, reach out to again, okay, you're going to reach out to her again. Prefer all town party to be available and posted out to public sector. He's going to respond to her email. And he said he had received it. Fine, okay. So I make a motion to, uh, seven minutes as, as it was, uh, for two nine twenty-two or is it amended?
Second. I seconded your motion to approve.
Okay, go ahead, wait, oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
If it's, are we going to budget next?
Uh, oh, uh, if you, um, if you'd like, I was going to get, I was going to go through the.
Either way, I would just want to ask you if I could get this to break, sorry, I think I already heard that. Been hydrating too much.
We can do the budget last, so we can probably get rid of those other things pretty quickly.
Okay. Or everything's going to melt.
I'm just watching that, when I.
Getting the big melt off.
Saturday, Saturday night, I thought I'd been working down library basement and like, oh, it's stocked already, I better go home, you know, and I, just before my lower driveway, but I've been having a lot of logging trucks, there's a logging across the street. And I actually did call Roger up the other morning, and actually spoke to his wife or whoever. And, uh, you know, if, if, if they could not bring the logging trucks in, well, that day, that was Monday, they loaded, and I saw three. And one guy, he would say back up the road and then turn into the field, and, and the one guy, he, my God, I, I could just see the back end of his truck backing up, pulling forward, but he couldn't back it, I guess he made straight up the road all right, but he couldn't do the turn. He's not a good driver, should be able to do that. I think today that he loaded four trucks.
Well, all year, you know, all year, uh, they're kind of down trees, you know, like all of it, all year.
But they, they can wait till dry stuff a little bit to take them out, but I guess they don't want to do that.
I also saw four today, four in a row, uh, well trucks, I mean, like, like big ones with the big long, um, pipes. I don't know where they were going, but they were, I don't, I don't know how many wells they were digging, because there were four big, big trucks came rolling through the wood house.
I think someone dropped this in the whole thing.
So, um, all right, so let's, let's, let's go to number seven, Roberts rules of.
I'm going to make a suggestion that we really address the issue. We, we're on the thirteenth business day from John Silbert's complaint. We need to go into executive session, approve the October fourth minutes, and then we can write a response to John, because it has to be in his hands and the open meeting law division by tomorrow. So, you know, going through all these other things, items, is, is, I think it's more important to do what we need to get done by a deadline than to go through all these other, so I'd make, you know, I'm agreeable to move everything that I put on the agenda to next week, because we need to get, take care of the October fourth minutes, because that's the subject of his complaint.
Well, why have a discussion about Roberts, that should, should be a very quick discussion about Roberts rules for order discussions. But why did you put it on the agenda? What's, uh, I think, I think it was on the agenda, you put it on the agenda.
Well, because I sent you, because I sent you what I'm proposing to be adopted tonight, and you've had no time to look at it, and you probably don't even look at it. But Justin has no idea. Justin sent me something and us something, but I don't agree with his version, so I think it's only appropriate that we deal with what's pressing and not, you know, I'm willing to let you guys look at what's been proposed, and then we can talk about it next week, but we need to deal with that October fourth.
It was documents like how we always send your C C on.
I'm not C C on them.
Yeah.
I'm C C on yours. I'm not C C on anything John sends.
Did you, did you see how I sent documents for tonight?
I see, yes, when you send them, when I'm here and I'm not.
No, I know, that's allowed, no? Doc had sending a doc, distributing a document for tonight's meeting.
Yes, but John mentioned that he sent a document and I didn't get it.
I haven't gotten a document.
That's why you're supposed to give everything to me forty-eight hours in advance so that it gets put on the agenda with a summary.
So.
But you might want to take what I gave you about from the handbook.
Well, listen, so this is something that, so, so Justin, for your own application, um, John Wondell has proposed this last year for the previous board, um, and, uh, the Massachusetts Handbook of Selectment does not advise using Roberts Rules as a parliamentary guide. We try to, we try to have our conversations, you know, we try, we try to talk to each other, conduct business. You can conduct business without it, um, and it's, and the previous board projected it, um, just because it's not, it's just, it's going to add, adds another layer of, boy, you didn't follow Roberts rules, really? And then somebody sends a complaint, well, you, I'll see that you've had Roberts rules and you didn't follow it. It adds another la, layer of, of, it just adds, it's not, it's not a suitable thing for a, for a small town to, uh, to even consider in a, um, and, and the Massachusetts Handbook of Selectment says, don't do it. So I would just, I would, I would move to, uh, to not even have this discussion.
Of course not.
So maybe next year it'll come up again.
All you have to do is look at the October sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting chaired by Steve Weiss, and then you will need, you will absolutely understand the need for the Roberts Rules of Order.
So I can see the, uh, you, the helpfulness of a rules of order, but I understand that different rules have different limitations. I was, it was a, a more modernized, I guess, for smaller groups, rules of order was suggested to me, which I did distribute to the board, uh, just prior to this meeting, that I would can, like to continue the discussion on, but John did recommend tabling all of his items until next week, which I'm completely happy to do. If he put them on there and he wants to table them, then table them. But.
I'd like to know the time summary for the complaint investigation. I think Don is here for one of the other items.
The public here for, for one of the other items on the agenda?
Yes, but I don't care if it's next week.
John, did you make a motion to table your items?
I'll make the motion to table my items till next week.
All second.
I vote yes.
Well, I vote no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so two, two zero.
Can we do the budget?
I'm sorry, you voted yes or no?
Yes.
I voted no. So the budget. What, what particular, uh, what, what do you want to talk about the budget?
Well, I was hoping there's some departments that I think would be hopeful to, at our next joint meeting or an upcoming joint meeting to meet with the departments, and I don't know how we go about, um.
So the, the schedule is going to be one more joint meeting with the finance committee where we're going to determine who we're going to meet with, and then we'll set that schedule.
Are there some specific department that you?
Well, I think the ones, you know, that asked for a new full-time, or new benefited position, absolutely, or, you know, a change in, in hours, really, which there's three, four, five of those, uh, because that's a big deal, and then, I know also it would be good to have someone from the Garfield Working Group in to talk about the mill foil control. But I don't, I don't know how to, how we, it is my first budget time, and it seems like we have some time, but it's also creeping up on us, and I want to talk about things like how, if we're going to use free, how we're going to use free cash. Are we going to use it to reduce the levy? Are we going to use it to pay off the library loan? I think those are good discussions.
So in general, I'm just in general, and I do not pretend to be an expert by any sort of imagination, but we sort of, but we, we, we try to work on the, we try to work on the budget, you know, on the, on the list, on the list upfront first, so that, that way we know what is going to be essentially available at the end, and also, um, we, um, when does the school numbers come? When do the school numbers come out?
Probably March. One thing that would really be helpful is if everybody would decide on COLA, because that's going to make an impact on the, you know, we, we've never waited this long to have a COLA figure in there.
Well, I, I would be comfortable making a select board recommendation, but shouldn't we really have a, a discussion with the finance committee?
You can make a recommendation in their meeting next week, and they could accept or not accept your recommendation.
Well, as a, I mean, I stated at the joint meeting, uh, I, uh, that I would, that I would be okay with, uh, four percent. The four percent COLA, well, if we call it COLA, but it's not really COLA. We, last year was three and a half, and this, every year previous was two percent. It addresses, um, it addresses inflation, and it actually exceeds, um, what departments like the library were considering to be a reasonable amount. So that's my, that's my personal, that was my personal suggestion, but, um, it also avoids, you know, any dramatic hit to the, to the, to the taxpayers, which we have to always be mindful of as well. So it comes, you know, so that was, that would be my suggestion, but I don't know if that's, it's, it's, uh. Justin, what do you think about that?
Well, it's generally in the range that I feel is appropriate, given the circumstances, but, um, I don't, are we only, are we only going to discuss COLA this evening, or are we?
So I did give you guys, if you want me to try to guide you here.
Sure, let's see, let's see if you can get through the, the highlights of it.
So do you have any further questions on grant writing, like, just because that was one that, that came up?
No, but I do want to, I, you know, I, I always want to point out that, that we always make it, uh, the last year or two, we've gone down to five thousand, we've been raised on the floor at ten thousand, so, um, I understand that we did not spend money this year.
Okay, so no further discussion. Justin, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be good if, the promise of we make, if we make our recommendations and the finance committee makes theirs, had, uh.
Don't fret.
Yeah, I just think it'd be better, I, I guess, we should do joint meetings, I guess, and.
Right. Correct.
You remember the last meeting, Michelle said that everybody was, you guys were going to have your meeting and discuss the items that you wanted to come back to, they were going to have their meeting and do the same, and then you were going to meet again and see how much smaller the list got, and go from there, where you would schedule any additional people that need to come in.
Well, my list hasn't really changed since that, since that meeting, but is it true that we're not meeting next week?
That is true.
So I, it's my understanding that we're meeting on the first, though?
Correct. They're having a, a single meeting on the twenty-second, and then there'll be a joint meeting on the first.
Could we, I mean, I, I, look, I've never done this before, but, um. I, I don't know what's the purpose of us having our own discussions and then.
Well, that, the, the, the purpose is, is just for a discussion. Um, it's just to get, it's just to get, everybody's got perspective, um, and so it, it is not, you're not making any kind of decision. It's just to have a general discussion, like to keep that discussion until the joint meeting. That's, that's fine as well, but the more discussions that you have, whether, um, it's, the better, you know, the better it is. Now, I mean, um, it, the thing is that there's plenty of time, it, until the school numbers come out, you really have no idea what to do, what you're facing with the budget. That's the reason why I asked, why, when the school numbers come out. So that's, that's, so, so all, so all the other things that we're doing right now are, we're basically getting ready for that. And then that, and then, and then, then the numbers come out, then it becomes real serious, and, you know, then we, you know, then we have the serious discussions of, of what, what's left over, what we've been working, also by that time, we may be able to get some feedback on, on what can be used under this Recovery Act. So, as you recall, um, the, uh, of, of reaching out to the town council to make determinations of what can be used and what can't be used, and that will have an impact on the budget as well.
Why is the budget eighteen percent higher than last year's?
So I think it would be helpful, Justin, and it's the usual process, is, one, you tell me which ones you still have issues about, what questions, and what questions you have, so that we can get the answers for you, rather than saving them all up for a joint meeting, when it's like a, a plan, surprise, here's my questions.
So I think, I'd like to meet with the police because, uh, to discuss their third full-time police officer position. Because it sounds like a reasonable ask, but it's an ask nonetheless. I would like to have further discussion about the office assistant position. Especially because it seems like the health insurance policy is going to be about as much, or a significant amount even compared to the salary, so I'm wondering if that could potentially be achieved without health insurance. The transfer station physician, I guess we're waiting, we're going to hear from the transfer station committee, but that, to me, is an important topic of discussion, and again, health insurance comes into play. I think we should meet with the clerk, because that's another request for a health insurance policy. I'd like to figure out, maybe we can get recommendations on the library loan.
I am getting those.
Okay. About, to see if we should pay off minimum, more, a lot, uh, what's the recommendation there? I thought on the H. I thought on the HR, the, the human resources line, I thought it might be prudent to leave some, now I can't find it on here, but some flexibility with averting to allow, if we get the shared director, it can be spent for the shared director. If we don't, or if we want to budget more money than just the shared director, we would have some flexibility and some money for that. You were reaching out to Tom Roy for the IT number, my understanding. Um, I thought it would make sense to set a target for free cash. I think the current budget leaves about 30,000 in free cash. I, uh, 35,000. I'm new to budgeting, but I would prefer to leave more in free cash. It seems like that might be prudent in case something comes up.
Historically, we usually leave about 25,000 in there.
And then we have a reserve, we have, well, how much do you usually put in the reserve fund?
Two separate issues.
Thirty, thirty thousand, but I mean, the finance committee can ask for what they want for the reserve fund, but for free cash.
Cause it goes away on June 30th. So we typically only leave a small amount in there.
Yeah, but this year allowed us to get the air packs, sorry, for the fire department. Is that from free cash?
I, everything that's a special article is coming out of free cash right now.
So, but I do think we should talk about a free cash target, whatever that may be. I think mine is probably higher than it was. It sounds like other people's are, but I'm new to this.
Why don't you give Justin a history of?
I will, so when we meet on Friday, I'll give some information.
What we've left in the cash over the last five years or so.
I, I do think the board should, or the board and the finance committee should consider the two and a half underwrite by half a million dollars. I saw, uh, what the accountant wrote and what John Silver wrote, and I talked to some people who are familiar with municipal county, and I'm not saying that we necessarily should recommend it or I recommend it, but I do think it, it might make sense for our town and should be considered. And then a target for stabilization, Steve has mentioned 500,000. I personally would prefer higher stabilization than that, but.
Well, total, yeah, total stabilization right now we have is if you add all the, all the little stabilization accounts and we have 540 plus, what, another hundred? Maybe if you add up the old, the other ones, the truck, the covert.
About 600,000.
So we, we have about 600. And by the way, I've got no problem with floating it back and turning it into one, into.
Well, that's, that was my very last point is I really do think we should seriously consider consolidating the three stabilization funds. And if we don't do that, we should put more money in it. And because for example, we're buying half the hose for the fire department and that's $30,000. So if we put in $15,000 every year into the fire department, that would be like hose and a little bit, you know, it's, it's, the, the expenses are huge and so I think we should consider consolidating them if we're not going to be more serious about it.
And that can be, and that can be done, right? You can. I, I, I mean, we could, you could just.
Yes, but I think that involves a conversation. You should have the fire chief in here as to why he asked for and what the history was behind it. And at the same time, it was also the same person. Um, you should have him and Jim here to talk about the bridges, roads and culverts and what the reason behind that was. I mean, you weren't here and I'm not sure that you were either, but the finance committee declined, wouldn't spend any mon, they'd put tons of money in the stabilization, but they wouldn't spend any of it.
Right. So that's right. And that's, I think, yeah, okay. Well, we have, we'll have the discussion. It's a very good discussion because right, that was, so that was, that was the, that was the issue of previous, especially finance boards where they're like, well, we're not going to spend any of it. I, my personal philosophy is no, let's say, let's keep that 500 level in mind, but then everything above it is, is, you know, fair game as long as we understand that we're going to also come up with a commitment to put monies in. That's the, that's the other, that's the flip side of this because, but the way stabilization got to where it is is that the towns were noodling with this idea of putting in $75,000 a year. However, one year, I think we did it one year and then one year we didn't do it and then, and then the whole thing kind of fell apart. Maybe the idea, uh, is that, um, in addition to, to keeping a level, let's say 500, $500,000 or 10% of the total, of total budget in stabilization. At, at some point, the, the, the town is going to have to commit or the, the boards are going to have to commit to, you know, to, to putting some money in there as well. It doesn't have to be a lot, but you know, you want to, you want to, cause you, once you drop it down to 500,000 dollars and you, the rest of the time you're going to have an argument. Of, you know, do we go, do we need the extra $10,000 and go to 490, 90 or whatever? And then it becomes an argument. So the idea, so it's good to have a cushion between 500,000 and whatever the amount is.
Maybe you should create a stabilization committee to do it, research it.
No more committees. Oh, maybe along that, I'll be on, I'll be on it next year. I'll be on stabilization.
All right. What else, Justin?
Well, I think that, that was most of it. I think we already talked about some of that at our last joint meeting, but I think, you know, a lot of this needs to be, be discussions with, with people like, like we said, like with the fire chief, with the director of operations so that we're all on the same page and with the finance committee. And, uh, I'm thinking that maybe one of the ways to, to, uh, make this budget maybe a little bit more reasonable is, is with the health insurance policies. Maybe, you know, there's a lot of requests for new health insurance policies and maybe if we cut a couple of them out, then that would help alleviate the budget.
I'll eliminate my administrative assistant position right now. That'll help.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I think it needs to be a holistic consideration of the needs and, and the, and what we need to provide for services combined with making a budget that is, is a reasonable ask. That's all.
But, but for example, not that, not that, as you mentioned, military assistant, if there was a part-time administrative assistant and you would have no problem with, you would have an issue with health insurance, would you?
Well, it's once we hit 20 hours, I believe.
Right.
And so the same thing kind of goes with the transfer station position where if we go with the full-time transfer station position, uh, it's actually a slight decrease in, in wages, but it's an increase with the health insurance policy. That will shape, save certain cleaning costs. And I haven't done all of the figures, but my point being, uh, not to prevent people from getting health insurance, but that might be an area of where we could work.
Health insurance is one of the, is one of the toughest things to deal with.
So Steve, can I ask everything that he listed? Do you have the same concerns? And I ask because for instance, with the police, do you have the same concern or should I recommend to Justin that he should go sit down with the chief and the sergeant by himself to get more understanding if you're.
So I, well, I, I want to, I want to add, it's not that I think all these are bad asks. It's that I think they warrant discussion because they're significant. And I'm not saying, you know, everything that I identified.
I didn't say you were saying that.
Yeah.
You know, you obviously need more information.
Somebody is, is having a relationship with their computer or they, they really want to be recognized or they're just losing their mind. It says, I think they're trying to speak.
It's coming up as Wingo.
Somebody's got a cat standing on the keyboard.
Sean. Okay.
No, ST.
Michael's up there.
Well, who is the ST? Is mute ST?
He must be having some difficulty.
Yeah. That worked. Okay.
That's weird.
I assume these meetings that you're talking about are going to be open to the public? You're not having any more private meetings, are you?
Well, I think, that's my point is I think with, I think it would be beneficial for everyone involved to meet with these departments. That way come town meeting. That way come town, it's not, uh, it's more aware and they can tell their friends and neighbors and then everyone's aware of, of different requests. You know, like we've, or I learned about and, and some, we've talked about the Congress Whiteboard meeting, but about the change in, in the state law regarding police. But if we do, if we meet with the police department, I could go on my own and meet with the police department and read about it. But if we discuss with them and why their request has changed, not to pick on them, but can more fully understand what we're asking from the taxpayers and the taxpayers can more fully understand why we're asking for that.
But. So, you know, um, would, would we be having a, let's use the police department not to pick on them as an example. Would the finance committee and the White Board be having a joint public meeting with the police department?
Only if the both boards felt the need to get more information. I mean, the purpose of the beginning meetings was so that when Justin, myself and, and Michelle sat down, we tried to, you know, determine if there was going to be any issues. And then when we brought it to you guys, sorry, my throat's a little dry. When we brought it initially, if you guys had issues, we could, you know, talk to them, but nobody's raised any issues yet.
Well, those, well, those are, um, I just listed kind of what my list.
Okay.
And it's, part of it, I guess, is I could go ask specific questions, but part of it is just having that discussion with everybody, with the finance committee and the slide board. I think it would be, would be helpful. So that we know what we're, we're asking for.
Okay. So, so, okay, so I, so, cause I, I was, I just want to make sure that we're talking about having, if we're going to have a, a public meeting that we have, it's just one meeting. So we, I mean, in other words, if we have a separate meeting publicly and then the finance committee has a, uh, and then we have a joint meeting, doesn't, it's a whole lot of meetings. If, if you, if you believe you want to have a discussion, let's say, let's use the police department, then the, then the finance committee and the slide board in the joint meeting could have a public session with them.
Yeah, that is what I was.
And that's what the whole purpose of tonight was supposed to be. So you guys tell me who you want, who you want more information from. And the finance committee is supposed to be doing the same thing. And then you're going to have a joint meeting to set a schedule and then you're going to meet with all these people.
So we're going to have this exactly the discussion that we're having now on March 1st to talk about, to make a, a list of the people that we want to have a public joint session with, the departments, not the people. On, on that, on the, that's the agenda for March 1st.
But your questions ahead of time would be helpful. I mean, Justin, are you just looking for the police department to come in and give the same exact presentation that they gave to the meeting with you, myself and Michelle?
Yeah, I think it's about the conversation. I think it's about the conversation. Uh, otherwise we go to town meeting and we, someone says, you know, why is this, this, so, and maybe one person can answer, but it'd be a heck of a lot better if everyone knew what we're asking for.
But that, but that actually doesn't happen that way. So when you and the finance, when the boards meet together, you discuss these requests and, and why, which we did when we all met together, we discussed why the police department was asking for this. So and, and I hate using the police department because it sounds like you guys.
I know, I know, I know.
Thanks. Okay. If anybody from the police department's listening, that's not the case. Um, but it's supposed to be if you have issues with their proposal because that's what the preliminary meetings were for, for us to gather all the information, bring it to the joint meetings and determine if there was anything. And then what happens when the warrant goes out, especially if there's something new like the police department and new positions. We give a cover letter that explains exactly why the proposal's being made and, and then the finance committee also has a budget hearing. So they have one more opportunity to anybody that wants to come and ask questions can. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I just think, uh, why not just have them ready in the room so they can, they can speak to it right there and have no miscommunication.
The point of the original meetings was to, to make them less intimidating and that, you know, the departments felt very uncomfortable with six people sitting in front of them. And, and this was a way to make the budget process more friendly and enjoyable and, and it, and it works really well. I think, you know, I think you're letting someone get in your head that we're not doing it the right way, but this is the way that it's been done for years.
Well.
I'm not saying how it's been done or not been done, but you just started.
And it works.
Yeah. Okay. So, so listen, so on March 1st, so again, on March 1st, let's have this discussion in front of the finance committee to come up with a list of, of, of departments that we would like to meet with in a public session jointly. So does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. This way we're having that discussion and the finance committee and we come up with the same, same group of people. We make a list. I'll make a list. Tom's going to make a list. And just make sure that most of that, that is on, that's the stated agenda, on the stated agenda for the joint meeting, first of March.
So just to be clear, and remember the list that we had, you don't have any additional questions for the fire department, correct?
What if he develops more questions during now in March 1st? I mean, why is he so untransparent? And why do you keep talking over me? Why can't we be transparent about the budget? What's the problem? You said in an email, Justin, that the private meetings were improper. If you want to make a motion to have.
So.
Do you, do you even know how this works in all the other towns, John?
Yeah, I do. I do. I actually do.
I don't think you do because you don't even know how it works here, John. Okay. You don't put in any effort. All you do is try to make trouble like your little friend.
I make a motion to terminate Melissa Noe from the employment of the town of Monterey.
Absolutely. Go for it.
The way you treat me and disrespect me at meetings, thinking you know everything is really basically.
Oh, I don't even, are you drinking?
Yeah. No, I wish I shouldn't be drinking. Working with you is in a real problem.
You don't even work with me. You don't come in here. You don't have a clue what goes on in this town hall, John. I am so tired of him.
Ditto. Ditto.
Okay. However, however, um, the record rule reflects that Don Wingo has made a motion to terminate Melissa Noe and that it was not seconded. Just make sure that is in the minutes. Thank you.
Done with the budget.
So, so I guess the bottom line is, uh, yes, it will be, uh, we will have a joint meeting and a public meeting. Uh, and Dustin, the, the other thing is that, um, I would recommend, Dustin, if you, if you have the time to have a discussion with former select board members, former finance committee members, um, their, their found of, of information. George Kane is a very good, um, person to reach out to. If you need his number, we'll, or his email can supply to you. Ken Basler obviously is a good person. There are people that have gone through this process and the process itself has been developed over time, um, to make, to be as, um, ironically least confrontational as possible.
Uh, yeah.
And as transparent.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be confrontational or say that it's not transparent. I just went, from my experience, whenever I'm on a team or something, doing something, there's nothing better than just sitting down with a person and having that conversation face to face with these people who are making, with these departments that are making requests. Not to say that they're wrong, but they can present and then we can understand, we got a better understanding of what exactly it's worth.
And that's why, that's why, exactly why both boards should be equally involved in the budget process because right, the more information that we have, then we're going to have to stand up, you're going to have to stand up at town meeting at some point, um, when people fall hold on something and you, and you have that information. So I guess the idea is, which was developed many years ago, this idea of, of, of kind of two rounds where one was kind of informal and one was more formal. It was not for, to try to be not transparent. It was so that they make it less, um, you know, obviously if you're under, if you're, you know, if you feel comfortable, you're going to be more, you're going to, you're going to give more. So you can have conversations. So it's not a bad thing to have a private conversation. So it's not a bad thing to have a private conversation with department heads just to have a discussion, you're not going to be making decisions on your own. No board member will make a decision on their own. It's just to get the information, like you said. And then come to a public meeting and you already have in your head some of the information. So that'll be on the agenda for the, for March, for March 1st. And we will do it. Okay, so, can we, you want to close this budget thing to a close? Or do you have, do you have anything else, Justin, you wanted to discuss?
That's all, that's all of my thoughts.
So again, we, the highlights are that we're going to, you know, we will have this discussion with the finance committee. And yet, we will still not going to get some hard numbers until, until the school, which is approximately, what, 20% of the budget, Melissa? 15% of the budget with the school these days? It's a big number.
Yeah.
And it changes things. I mean, I've been on, I've been in this situation where we thought we had it all, sat down, it looked perfect, and then the school came in and like, no, we need this amount of money. So it's, but, but it doesn't come out until it's done. So, you know. But we're in a good, schedule-wise, we are not behind in any stretch of the imagination. We've got plenty of time to make it and then test it and then argue out the small.
Should, we make a preliminary COLA recommendation to at least set up, or a preliminary SOC report? Or you think we should just wait until a joint meeting?
Well.
Because maybe that's better.
That's, that's fine. I mean, I would, I would, again, I would like to suggest that, that we recommend a 4% of COLA.
That's because you want to reduce the pay of the employees in a year in which now we know it's seven and a half percent to cost of living.
So I, I heard you, I heard you, you may said, it's a very, it's a very good argument. However, we, this town cannot, we're never going to be in a position to do, to try to match the inflation rate. And because, because right now, we do a cross-board raise, different people are impacted differently. So we have to be more conservative when it comes to these types of things. Now, you're sitting right next to Mickey, who's, who's obviously done, I like to put Mickey on the spot. He's obviously done an analysis and came up with 3.8% for the, for the library folks as being.
Well, that has nothing to do with cost of living.
But I was originally, so anyways, so, so, so keeping the inflation numbers in mind, but also keeping the fact that inflation is not going to last forever and, and keeping, and keeping in fact that we, that you cannot, once you go up, you can't go, you can't go down. And in line with what I believe other towns are doing. And if somebody can also do some checking, you could certainly reach out to other towns. But again, I would reach out to towns that are more our size, not Great Barrier or Jeff Field or whatever. I think that 4%, which would be the highest amount Monterey has ever raised, that Monterey has ever offered their employees, is a, is, is both reflective of the current economic state. I think it's, I think, I think the employees would like to have it. I mean, it would be, you know, it's better than 3.5 the last year. And yet, it doesn't, it keeps the, it keeps the tax rate in check. So, but I'd be happy to have that survey with the finance committee as well. And perhaps in that, in the interim, you know, you can do some research, find out. A town like Egremont is a good, a good comp for Monterey. Otis, maybe not, but.
May I just remind you that last year, when we gave three and a half percent inflation rate, it was 2%. We purposely gave the extra one and a half percent because we felt that the employees were entitled to raise. So it's not true that we've always given less than the cost of living.
Well, I didn't say that, but I'm saying that Monterey has always given 2%. I mean, ever since I've been on the board, it's always been 2%. Every single year, 2%, 2%, 2%. And so last year, right, you're, you're correct, last year, I felt, well, a lot of people felt. You, you, I think you were the champion of it. You felt that the employees deserved more. It was less about inflation.
Just a basic rate.
A basic rate.
Yeah.
And we were, we were, we were having a, we're having a good year. And, you know, our costs were in check. And so I don't think, I don't think there was anybody who descended from, from the three and a half percent on. And I'm just, I'm, anyway, I'm pitching, I'm pitching a half a percent higher.
I, I am more or less on the same page as you. But I, yeah, I think why don't we meet with the finance committee and discuss it?
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine. Are we, are we, we're done with this part? And we're going to jump into, to discuss these minutes?
We have comments and questions from the public.
I'm sorry, yes.
And I also have an item that I didn't get in time. I would like permission to contact counsel about an issue that John Silver is raising with our seniors and emails that they send out to people. My research on what he sent says that it doesn't apply to us, but I would like to confirm with counsel.
About, about.
He got into quite a little sparring match with our sweet little outreach coordinator about how he got an email from her and he shouldn't be on this list and the CAN SPAM Act and just giving her all kinds of, she had a hard time. So I asked her to forward everything to me and, and I wanted to look it up with counsel.
I had a problem with that. Yeah, that's.
Thank you. And then did you want to discuss the opinion you got from counsel?
Oh, uh.
And why we weren't discussing that item tonight?
Yeah, well, so, so, just when we see that email from you. And so, I hope, so I went ahead and verified with the town council. Well, do you.
So that we should post it to an open meeting?
Yeah, he said, if you can talk about, he said, if you're talking about ours, he says, that's an open meeting. He said, and he said, the rest, he says, and again, you know. Well. No, the other, if any, if anything else, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, no, it shouldn't be no discussion until this investigation is concluded. But if the real truck said it is ours, let's have, we can have, hopefully, we can have a nice, frank and civil conversation. I don't anticipate it being anything too long. And it's just, whatever's, you know, whatever, whatever says on the page. That's, that's, that's what it'd be. So we can, we can put that on the agenda?
Yeah, you want to put that on the agenda for next week?
Next week, sure. So we'll put that on the agenda for next week. Okay, anything else from the public? I hear what you're saying, John. I'm not, just nothing.
I'm sorry?
I hear what you're saying.
Okay. You hear the word?
No.
Your argument is obviously not sufficiently persuasive for me, but hey.
Maybe with a hat on.
By the way, I, public comment. Remember the suggestion to consider, I don't even know which way I voted on it, about financing the truck rather than paying for it, considering the impact of what you can do with that money now, either to lower the tax rate or to apply it to the library. And the theory behind that is that the truck is to be used for the public over a 10-year period, at least stretch out the payment for it so that this year's people aren't paying for the entire thing when the next nine years' people are going to get the benefit of it. And one way to say.
It's an interesting philosophy.
And the other comment I make is that, on the, I think you should make up your mind about the $500,000 right now fund. Is that for emergencies only? Or do you want to use that as some sort of savings plan over time? Many towns have nothing. They don't have any, any fund at all, on the theory that they don't want to tax the taxpayers for something that may never arise. And if it arises, they'll go and they'll borrow money if they need to. Our accountant and auditor said that $500,000 was okay, but it's probably more than we need. Melissa has those two opinions, which I think you should look at. But if it's an emergency fund only, I don't know how you pick the number, but why more than $500,000 when the professionals are saying that even $500,000 is a lot for this town? But those are things that I'd like to think about.
I, yeah. It's, well, it is, it is the, it is the ultimate safe card in my mind. It, what, it's what allows Monterey, if we, if we ever get to the point where we're going to have to do, let's say a bond, or get a bond rating. That's one of the, that's one of the questions that they, that they ask. If I, if I look to try to get a bond rating and says, and they're going to say, well, how much do you have in, in reserves? No, nothing. Well, we figured, we'll just wing it if something happens. I don't know how that affects, I'm not a professional money manager. But, but I don't know how that affects, how that would affect a rating in the future.
Well, you do know that the professionals have told you that $500,000 is more than enough with your auditing your account.
Sorry, maybe, yes?
Isn't there some money we can try and put aside for like the COVID out here because that could be a big impact? So that you have money and not just free cash, which we spend anyway. That's sort of a revolving fund that we spend, but building up some money so that we are, that I am paying and you are paying for a COVID, that may not be put in for a number of years, but it's going to be so that somebody else doesn't have to pay a whole lot and everybody pays in a little bit now.
Yeah, but then you're having, you're asking this year's taxpayers to pay for something.
They're not going to like, it's planting, it's planting a little tree.
It comes out of.
You get shade out of it later.
No, 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 it comes out of their tax money and it may not be needed for three, four, or five years.
I'm okay with that. I'm planting, I'm planting a little tree. Somebody will sit and shade.
And Mickey, that was one of the reasons why we created these separate civilization accounts. One is called Bridges Roads and Culverts to save up for projects like that. And when I suggested that last year, one particular finance committee member shot it down. So, you know, we try to do these things to plan for the future and it all depends on who you have on the committees and boards at that time and what their vision is.
Always a challenge. Everybody's got a different philosophy when it comes to, you know, this type of budget.
Copy of Jim Ponce's report, can I have? Just say no.
I said, sure.
Okay, could, could we get through the, do you want to go through these other things or what's happening here?
Because you're going to do your executive session minutes?
Yeah.
Then I'm going to go.
By the way, I'm going to hold too, but you only need an executive session if you're going to have amendments for them. If you vote freedom and you don't have amendment.
Well, I.
They're not going to go anywhere.
They become public documents if you do it during.
Oh, okay, I'm wrong. Good night, guys.
Yeah. Either way, good night.
Good night. Hope you get your jackets, because I'm sure you, someone's going to have amendments.
I wouldn't walk back without it.
I know you would have. My role is mine.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mickey will be on the, on the copy.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, I'm going to record the meeting, is that all right?
You have to make a motion to go into executive session.
But I mean, can I just tell the chair that I'm allowed to record the meeting?
But you should do it once to get into executive session. Because you don't even know that you're going to go into.
Oh, I know, but can I just start recording audio just for now?
Go, go. All right, everybody, so we're, we're, we have to discuss, we're trying to approve some executive session minutes and we, and, so they have, we have to go into executive session to approve these executive session minutes. So that's going to exclude, unite folks except for Mr. Wangle.
We need to vote first.
I know, I, I.
Can we vote people up? I know.
I would, I take a motion to go into executive session for the purposes, is it, is it a, for the purpose of, of discussion of executive, of previous executive session minutes.
Second.
And we're out, well, we have to do it, we have to, okay, we go second to go into it. So I go yes to go into it, then we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, yes, to go into executive session.
And then Wangle to go, yes, yes, okay, good. Now, roll call. Stephen White, chair, says yes, let's go into executive session.
Justin McCook, yes, let's go into executive session.
John Mangle, yes.
Okay, so we, please, let's, we're going to, we have, we still have to close the door and make sure the folks are out and light a candle. You know what, folks, I will also record the meeting.
I'm not recording this one.